I was absent.
Public session. Anyone from the public wish to speak?
Janet Waugh, City Clerk. I'm going to take the opportunity, since everybody is here, except for one person. Welcome, everybody. Newcomers. I want to introduce myself and my staff to my office. If anybody needs anything, Diana Brand, Jan Silver, and myself are always available, either email, fax, phone calls. Anybody that's missing keys from a box, please see me after the meeting. We have questions. Our doors are always open. Congratulations. Best wishes, again, welcome. Thank you. Best wishes for you in the honor of the Alderman. Thank you.
Thank you. Sir?
Yes. I am on 62 Church Street.
Please cross the podium.
Oh, I'm sorry. You're naming that. Never been here.
Name your address, please.
Down in Raleigh, I live on 62 Church Street. And there's not supposed to be no parking on that side of the street. They constantly park in front of those, like, 58, 62, and 64. On the sidewalk, there should be signs up there.
Thank you.
What was she at just again?
58, 62, and 64.
And name of street?
City Church.
Anyone else from the public wish to speak? Yes, please.
Hey, we did. One on Castleitis. A great gratitude to you, President, for one thing. It took four years for me to get this project going up, but Eagle Hold is with the lights being changed. And probably that's when we got done. And then one more thing, I'd say thank you to the mayor on the LED light that he got changed, the street looked brighter.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public wish to? Yes, ma'am.
I'm Mrs. John Adams. I'm from the Dallas State speaking in the midst of my topic on Merkley. I'm going to go down to the back of my bed, sorry. My father John Merkley was born in 1955 on Jackson Street in Ansonia. We're here to speak to you all regarding some water drainage issue that has been noted on Jackson Street since 2010, with the worst of it being over the past year. Starting in November of 2016, my father had been complaining about the runoff from Jackson Street drainage ditch that the property was already in charge. The water flowed from problem link down through the yard, throughout the base and the street on the edge of roads. It was noted since last November that the ditch outside the property was full of drained water and debris. It was noted that the ditch was internally not draining. In November, um, sorry, only my father was contacted immediately to see what could be done about this issue. He would reply if he was given the next day. Nine days later, he was contacted again, pictures of the water. He replied, "It was called my day debt." The following day, he had asked if anyone had come to look at the ditch. At this time, it was unknown to my father. When he had arrived home later that evening, the water was still testing the yard. Since December 18th, almost a month after the first contact with the Alderman, the water was still testing level. Now partially ice over with snow on the ground. The response at this time was public works would be contacted again. Now January 3rd, 2017, the water was still at its all-time high. April 4th, public works came out and dug deeper path. April 12th, it was digged DOT was waiting for the water to receive so that they would be able to clean the pipe up. The director of public works was also asked to go back and look at the issue, he had DOT out as soon as possible to fix the issue. The fast and work continued till the drain was cleaned out at the end of April, with the joint collaboration of public work and DOT heads. Fortunately, due to the water drainage off Jackson Street and all of this debris that came with it, the drain was ultimately clogged, causing streaming water from November of 2016 to April of 2017. Unfortunately, there has been damage to the property as a result of the water standing in the ditch and at the levels above the cemented area. In April, there has been letters submitted to Attorney Moreno in this board. Since this date, it has also been correspondence with DOT, Senator Logan through his assistant Jamie I. Harnady, as well as state representative for the mission to help their careers, Mary Ann Bailey. And will continue to correspond until resolution and speech. The resolution we are looking for is the drainage issue off of Jackson Street to become diverted from the property, meaning copper flow of water, the 30-inch drainage pipe coming out. And the damage to the property to be fixed and the home to be restored to its previous November 2016.
Thank you. This is one of our communications for this evening, so we'll address it. You'll hear the date later. All right.
Okay.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public wish to speak? Okay, I'm not going to ask three times. I'll have in the past, I'll just ask again. Anyone from the public wish to speak? Hearing none, seeing none, thank you. Public session is closed. Elderman official session. Mayor Cassetti, please.
Good evening, President Vaccaro, members of the Board of Aldermen, and residents in the great city of Ansonia. Congratulations, Lori, on your appointment as President of the Board of Aldermen. Let's please have a round of applause for President Vaccaro. I want to thank Alderman Tripp for his dedication in service in the role of President of the Board of Aldermen these past four years. Let's have a round of applause for Phil. We want to congratulate and welcome our newest Alderman to the board. In the third ward, I want to welcome Joseph Cassetti and Dominico Filippone. I believe Dominico is the youngest member of the Board of Aldermen in the history of the city of Ansonia. In the fifth ward, I want to recognize Chicago Rivers for the board. In the sixth ward, I want to welcome Kevin O'Brien. I also want to acknowledge our current Alderman, Charlie Stoll, Lori Vaccaro, Phil Tripp, Rich Castleitis, Joe Jowman, Josh Schuer, Dave Blackwell, and Frank Beliebro.
Mayor. And Martin Dempsey.
You have been a great service to this city over the years, and I am proud of the work you all do. Together, we will be a strong team and move this city forward, and we will continue to recharge Ansonia. On the economic development front, pending this board's approval, we will be awarding the Wakeley Avenue Reconstruction Project to J. I. Palucci, Inc., out of Brookfield, Connecticut, and will be working with them on a construction schedule. Also pending your approval, we will be scheduling a pre-demolition meeting with the standard demolition regarding the schedule for the Peck School demolition. The armory is requiring additional work due to the advanced stages of decay uncovered under the process of repointing. We are going to hear about that from Mike and Sheila later on in the meeting. Our Riverwalk Segment Eight is well underway and will continue as long as weather permits. We have a new business that has moved into 360 Main Street. It is a new healthcare training facility for home health aides and CNAs. Yon Home Care Staffing Services, Inc., will have 10 employees, and the location will be on a main office for their operation. They currently have three offices. They will train workers and send them out into the field from the Ansonia location. This property is owned by Jerry and Jeremy Noserino. The project also includes the renovation of five apartments, which are already 80% filled. We have two new grants to announce. One grant is for $200,000 for assessment work left on 65 Main Street, and the other, we hope, is forthcoming for $200,000 in assessment funds for Ansonia Copper and Brass. You have the resolutions before you this evening. There is a lot happening on Main Street, and more to come. John and Sheila will talk more in depth about these projects and others later on. Along with our new members of the Board of Aldermen, we have some new employee changes in person to our personnel that I would like to make you aware of. Dana Casabulla has taken over as Assistant Assessor and has been a great asset to us. Dana is very experienced member of the office and hasn't skipped a beat since she started. Marcia Benno, our Assessor and Dana, make a great team. At the library, Jennifer Lester has taken over as our new Library Director. Jen has over 17 years' experience in city government. We welcome her aboard and know she will be doing a wonderful job. On the topic of personnel, I want to thank Jeff Coppola, who has been serving in the capacity of Acting Senior Center Director. I think Jeff is doing a wonderful job with our seniors, as well as serving as the Recreation Director. Keep up the good work, Jeff. We truly appreciate your efforts. While we are thanking and congratulating everyone, I believe congratulations is in order, and I certainly do not want to leave out our 2017 Ansonia Chargers High School football team. I want to congratulate them on another amazing season. I want to thank head coach Tom Brockett, John Sponheimer, Bob Leese, and also John Mahelko, Andy Mancini, Kevin Rowley, Earl Stanley, Sean Dinson, Shane Kingsley, Joe Perubi, team captains Markell Dobbs, Justin Lopez, Cody Tiedosio, Kevin Roscoe, Michael LaRova, and Colby Ortiz, family, friends, and volunteers, and of course, our incredible players. You came up a little bit short in your battle for the Class S State Championship. I was right there with you last night on the field at Fisher High School when you went up against St. Joseph's. They played a great game and should be commended, but I want to thank all of you for the teamwork and effort you put into just getting to this final game and competing on such a high level. You worked hard and you excelled. That's a great example of teamwork, and I thank you for your achievements. And finally, let me end by wishing Alderman Joe Cassetti and Dominico Filippone a happy birthday. They were both born today, December 12th, and I'm going to let you figure out which one was born in 1994. Happy birthday to you, Pat. I didn't know. Look at that.
Are there any questions for the mayor?
Mr. President, members of the board, congratulations to you all on the first meeting of your new term. Want to update the board on the ordinances that were recently passed. They have all been sent out for publication, both in the paper and online, the immunity code, which gives access through the website to our charter and code. So they are all in effect and operative as we speak. That also includes the parking violations that we approved some time ago. We had done a check to make sure everything was set, and everything is. So right now, everything is up to date in terms of ordinances, enforceable and effective. This includes the snow removal policy that was passed several months ago, and that's certainly timely. Residents should be reminded that there are new rules for clearing and removing ice and snow from the premises, and also, of course, a prohibition, now with a fine attached, for throwing snow and ice into the streets. We will be sending out on Facebook and on the website a reminder as to what those new rules are, but of course, the board members, you're encouraged to remind your residents that we do have rules in effect, there are new penalties in effect, and of course, it's for the safety of all the residents of the city of Ansonia. 65 Main Street and ATP and Palmer Building are two big projects that are up, really starting to move forward this month. We have both of our appraisals back on 65 Main Street. If you remember, we sent out for appraisals in connection to our evaluation of a possible eminent domain action on the entirety of what we call 65 Main Street. That consists of that garage, indoor garage building that we call 65 Main Street itself, a parking lot, and a piece of what's commonly referred to as the Pharaoh Process Lab. With those two appraisals, which I'm going to make publicly available and I will put into the Alderman boxes later this week, we are going to sit down with the owners of 65 Main and resume our negotiation to see if we can work towards a possible voluntary purchase of the buildings before we discuss eminent domain as a group. And on the ATP and Palmer Buildings, we're trading some last-minute revisions to the agreement between the city and Copper City Development, Jerry Noserino and Charlie Smith. That meeting will take place later this month with staff. And finally, we have some claims on for executive session that we'll talk more on as quickly. That's it for the evening. We'll take any questions.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Marine, while I was away last month, before I went away, I had a couple of people asking me about video cameras in Town City Hall here and tape recording. Can you, because I don't, I don't really understand how that's, works in a public place, and if people come in from outside, from the private sector, if they're being listened to talking to somebody, how does all of that work with the, and there must be a good reason that they have to be put up also. Thank you.
Well, anytime there is videotaping going on on a public premises, it certainly has to be done for a valid reason. Right now, the only cameras that are both installed and running are in the tax office, and of course, that's because the transfer of money is occurring in that area, and that stems from some incidents in the past, or coming out of the tax office. But it really was the administration's intention to install cameras for the purpose of monitoring areas where money is being exchanged in other areas of the city, for example, the clerk's office, potentially the library. Now, in terms of the protocol for that, none of them are turned on yet because the appropriate protocol encompasses being informed. So notices will go out to the employees that there will be video monitoring. There will also be a flyer that will be posted in the windows, say, of the clerk's office, informing residents that video monitoring is going on, so that notice will take effect first, and then the cameras will go on. The purpose of this board, you know, it's certainly a safety measure to take to make sure that taxpayer money is being protected and that there's a measure of documentation going on so that if anything does happen, we have archival footage that we can go back and review.
Does this board have to approve that?
This, according to the union contracts, and it is in the union contracts that the video surveillance could occur, there's no need for the board to approve.
Okay, that's good. Thank you. Thank you.
Are there any other questions from the Alderman, Mr. Marine?
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the Board of Aldermen. Mayor touched on Wake, the Wakeley Avenue project. We had nine bidders, you'll see in your packet. The bids were extremely competitive, so it was very well, the engineering that was done was very well refined, the scope was refined, and the bid came out under what we have. So I'm hoping that this board sees fit to award the bid to J. I. Palucci in Brookfield. And the other, the other bid that we had was for Peck School. We had four bidders. Again, the low bidder came in under what we have budgeted for that school, so hopefully you'll, you'll go forward with the standard demolition award of bid. We want to get those projects going. When it comes to demolition, they, the only concern is the ground freezing. So they, they can move forward this winter depending on what, on what the climate is or what the weather conditions are going to be. We mentioned, I want to mention Prindle Pulaski, Alderman Schuer, Alderman O'Brien. Just want to tell you that the final design is 100% complete, and we're in conversations with the DOT on the approval of that design. Still haven't gotten approval. Once we do, be ready to go out to bid with that as well. The armory, we did touch briefly on, I think, last month, but in, in cutting the, when you repoint, you have to cut the joints and pull up, pull out the bricks, and when they did that, they removed the bricks, and behind that was like decay in the wall, in the exterior wall of the armory, quite a bit of decay, I'm understanding. Mike can help me out if I get stuck. And so instead of repointing, you're actually reconstructing now, so you're reconstructing the back, the, the under part of where the bricks are put back into. So that's going to require a little additional money. We're working on that right now as we speak. And I'll come back to you again with the numbers, but it's going to require additional money. And we're also going to, I'm going to bring before you a phasing in, sort of a second phase with the armory, even though we're, we're expending all of the grant funds on that project, second phase of the exterior. So there'll be more work that needs to be done. Remember, you know, it's a very old building and it hasn't been well-maintained over the years. You'll have, you're, you're going to see two resolutions for two grants that we got. Well, let me back up. We've gotten one grant for 65 Main Street in the amount of $200,000, and that's to do any additional assessment work if we, if we are looking at the, at the parking lot, if we're looking at the portion of the other building that overhangs the parking lot. So that money can be devoted to that project. But the second grant, I'm being ambitious or overly optimistic about, DECD did mention that we possibly may be able to get an additional $200,000 for Ansonia Copper and Brass site. We, we did all of the assessment work above ground. This would be for subsurface contamination. So we know, we know what's above the ground, we know what's in the buildings, we know what it costs to demo them. This would be now to get some idea of subsurface. And the idea there is not to, to, to come up with an astronomical number that we can't address, but to come up with a number and to come up with options to address those, those problems on that site. So for instance, if you're capping it, it'll cost less, whatever the end, end result may be. So those two, I'm, I'm jumping ahead with the resolutions because I want to have it in place in case we are to get the other $200,000. And those are not matching grants, so that's just straight grant funds. Met with, I briefly met with the owners of ATP, or the future owners of ATP Palmer, Jerry Noserino, and he indicated to me that they, you know, that we can, not that we're going to take our time, but that we will have sufficient time to relocate the senior center. They're not going to rush them out, they're not going to push them out whenever we're ready and we're comfortable. They're fine with waiting. They're going to build out the apartments first, as a first phase. So I think that's about it. That's all I have for now. Any questions? Yes?
We're glad we were on the Google of the bid. Do you have a ballpark start to finish date for that?
That's, that's a good question. If we can get started in the, in January, we'd like to get started.
I think a year. Probably the entire year of 18.
We're saying, we're saying nine months, but, you know, we'd like to be aggressive. So. Alderman Schuer?
Will that $200, the underground grant, $200, will that, will that cover like definitively, like what needs to be done?
It's, it's essentially a phase one slash phase two, so it'll tell us what's underneath the ground, it'll tell us the locations of where that material is, so that, that I think will give us a good idea, a good estimate.
Sheila, has there been a site plan submitted by Jeff?
He has a draft site plan. He has not yet submitted it. Looks good. And any, any of you who want, would like to take a look at it, it's in my office. They're not ready to submit yet, but we'll be doing so probably next month, hopefully. Yes, Alderman O'Brien, lots of questions. This is great.
Quick question regarding the relocation of the senior center.
Yes.
On a potentially temporary basis during construction over there, are there any, like, is there any, any place that's an option right now?
Backup places. Yeah, I mean, we, we've explored some places before. We talked about 65 Main Street, but, and we are still, we're still doing that for the potential, but according to the owners, that we don't have to, we can move them from, am I understanding your question?
Yeah.
If we don't use 65, or if you're saying they need to be relocated while they're doing construction?
Right, prior to?
Yeah, they're saying, they're saying they don't need to do that, that they'll give us the time we need to relocate.
So they'll be able to work around?
Yes, correct.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Sheila Allen?
All right, thank you.
Greg Mark, Director of Constitutional Service.
Thank you, President Vaccaro. Greetings, Aldermen. A couple of projects should be coming to a close this month, and maybe an announcement for something pretty significant that I'm working on for next spring, but early last week, the UI began installation of 4,000 LED series lights, lights around the entire city. There's commercial and residential. 1,600 total lights are going to be replaced, and based on their schedule, weather permitting, they shall be installed by the first week of January, if not a little sooner. So that's, that's pretty positive. Through the efforts of Public Works, like Alessio's group, the Winter Playground at Lynette Park is moving forward. We have the hillside cleared back a couple hundred feet. This past weekend was kind of a soft opening for the park. We did have a few inches of snow. We observed at least 50, I observed, counted at least 50 kids sled riding with, you know, with their parents or, or adult supervision, but that was over Saturday and Sunday. And this past, I guess yesterday and today, the skating rink was installed. It'll be filled with water, and we get some cooperation with Mother Nature. We're looking at a grand opening event of some, some magnitude, probably right after Christmas, again, weather permitting. So those are my two big completion projects ongoing. Any questions or?
Any questions for Mr. Mark? I have a question. I just got to tell you, food truck on site?
Yeah, yeah. We also have published online now on the city's website, there's, there's a pamphlet or a flyer that lists the rules of the park. The food truck is going to be contracted for most likely Saturday, Sunday, from noon to 5:00 p.m. And, you know, it's just a little, we're basically trying to take advantage of the most populated times that the park is going to be used. And again, that's all weather permitting, you know, for snow, it's cold, it's not raining out, whatever the best conditions are to accommodate residents.
Thank you. Okay.
Mr. Bichero? Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to take this opportunity to thank all of you that were elected or re-elected to your positions, and also, before we start, I'd like to wish everyone a Merry Christmas. And just like Christmas, as we can segue in, my job has pretty much been like Christmas past, Christmas present, and Christmas future. Almost finished with the audit from last year. We're working on redoing the budget based on the state budget passing that they had to redistribute our, our current budget, and we sent out the papers for next year's budget. So pretty much, I do a lot of budget, and that's kind of all I've been working on between those three pieces. So you'll be seeing very shortly where we're going to start for next year's process, so that's pretty much it.
Any questions for Mr. Bichero?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. President, thank you. Congratulations, everybody. I look forward to working with you. Very briefly, winter parking rules began December 1st. For the first seven days, we issued warning sheets with our people that just moved into town or whatever, as a reminder to others. Starting on the 8th of February, we started hard portion. And we're getting calls during the day and also dropped their issuing ticket. So if you, if you see anything, if you have any complaints or constituents, please don't hesitate to call us. Although we've not seen any of these situations, you may have seen some of them on television where packages and whatnot are being taken off porches. Unfortunately, we've been pretty good so far in our Texas. Again, as a reminder, when you're talking to people, anybody, try to make some other arrangements if you can. Have it delivered, or pick it up, or have it delivered to a neighbor, a friend or whatever. Lack of cars, walls in the parking lots, big while, or parking lots here or elsewhere. Packages go in the trunk. This is important, this is especially important this time of year, because we do see those. And these are crimes of opportunity. Unfortunately, they are what they are. So we try to be vigilant in our lots, but we can't be everywhere all the time. So people have to really think about this. And I'll take any questions from you then.
Can you just remind people about people having permanent stability?
Yes. Yes, thank you. Because you called me the other day. You had somebody under porch or something.
Three guys, they were asking for social security, David Burn, they were asking if they would not move out very often. So they're all, so they make the law. Whether that's children, or.
So the, it's a great point. So we have a process in the city where if somebody's going to solicit, there are two different, there's an A and B, class A, class B permits for slightly different uses. If somebody's coming to your house with the intent of selling you something, whether it's a product today or a service in the future, they have to come and get a permit from the police department. I sign it. We do background check and we collect money from them to do that. So when you started, and it's all, Kastelias called me in the heat of the moment the other night when they were on the porch, right? And based on what he described, I hadn't signed any recently, so I knew that that was sounded like a scheme. I didn't realize they were asking for those questions. Obviously, they shouldn't be answering, asking those questions, certainly nobody should be answering those questions. But we do have a process in place. And sometimes people will come in instantly and try to do that, and others obviously are, they're just trying to, this is, that's a scam. So they're trying to get one over. So we do have a process. People are actually very good about quality. So it's not just, remember that we get called all the time from people that pay the same thing in the blocks.
Chief, I heard that there was, I guess, an alternate side, snafu on the fifth ward. Of course, tickets were issued, but then rescinded. Was it all that rectified?
That didn't come to mind. Which street was that?
I think it was on Church Street.
Church Street, yeah.
There was, there was three or four tickets issued right after the first. And I guess they were all rescinded after. They were actually on the right side, and all the cars that were on the wrong side.
This does happen? It does happen. Honestly, there are a couple of streets in town where they're odd and even on the same side. So that's, every year, we have to go out in fair eye. So we've been doing this for years. There's a number of them, mostly on the west side. It gets confusing, so this does happen, but we try to take care of this as quick as we can.
Any other questions for Chief Hale? Mr. Trepp.
Yes, thank you. Chief, just for the public benefit, so everybody eyes up now should be parking on the odd side of the street, is that correct?
Correct. There are, of course, in every rule, there are exceptions. There are some streets that are, there are exceptions. North Stage Street, people are going to stay on the same side. So if there's no parking on one side, you remain on that side. There are some streets that have no parking at all. Stagecoach and some of the other really small, narrow roads.
Mr. Stoll.
Chief, my invisible sidekick who's no longer with me, that bottom of Fourth Street, where the convenience store is?
Yes.
I know, I've seen our guys in and out of there, but I also noticed that there's still, I don't know if there's been less tickets given out there, but there seems to be like more courage of parking.
Parking and no parking.
Right. And, you know, with the, this time of year, when the, when the lights, you know, you've got less light and the strange ways, the shadows, I've seen several almost accidents there. People are trying to sneak across the road while people are trying.
I will bring that to attention. Again, we do talk about that, we do enforce it. There are some people that are in there for two or three minutes, or five minutes or whatever. So they are, they are aware of that, but we continue to remind them of those trouble spots and that's all.
It's almost, but I got to, you know, thank you for it, because you have, you know, they've changed their attitude a lot since that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
Mr. Tellezio, Public Works.
Good evening, everyone, and good luck. I'll make a little briefing. We had our first snowstorm here, went very well. No accidents, no breakdowns. We've been doing a great job, changing the climate with different people, different areas. It worked out well. Got a few more shelters this year. We've got young guys. So we got, our shelter was done, it was like seven hours, instead of going 12, 15 hours, we did it like seven hours. We've got every street, sidewalk, stairwell, city building done like seven hours, which was a record. We put like five guys out, we shot five, six, seven, eight, that's a really great job. And you know, Greg Mark, Lynette Park, just about three, four days, we're clearing the hill, cut some trees, pulled some trunks out. That come out very good, the kids were sled riding, as you said. Ice skate went in today, we filled it about 30 will lay up, we got about another 30,000 gallons of air. That's just about done, we're going to fire pit, we'll probably fill it back tomorrow. And that'll be taken care of. Other than that, we're out, thin our storm drain out, action holes. We're doing things now that we couldn't do when we're busy in the summertime, cut some rope back in the streets. Biscuit's gone drains, WBCA clean out some pump stations. Other than that, that's all, that's about it.
Any questions for Mike?
Yes. Have progressive street builders going down the village, a really large new compo. If you're going to put something in, appreciate it.
If you're going to pop quick now, wouldn't be necessary for snow and the sockets under, you pop the press.
Any other questions for Mike Tellezio? Yes, Mr. Shure?
This is actually, it's a comment. Recently, a couple weeks ago, someone took out the stop sign on the corner of Island and Prindle. Actually left half their car behind. I wanted to thank you and the police for your joint effort to get a temporary and a permanent sign put up there. Thanks.
Any other questions for Tellezio? Mr. Trepp?
Yes, thank you. Mike, if I may. I've just observed you over the years, and I want to thank you for your dedication to the city and also your concern for the taxpayers. Just for example, repair the wood chipper, wood chipper that remained dormant for many years. You put new batteries in it with minimal cost, you fixed it, and now that thing has been saving them money ever since then. Also, you're spearheading the shared services with Derby, as you discussed last month. I just feel you're doing a fantastic job. We're lucky to have you, and I just hope you stay where you are for a long time. So, thank you, sir.
Appreciate it. Any other questions for Mike Tellezio? Thank you, Mike. Thank you. [applause] Any other questions? Financial, you still have the people report.
Well, pay all bills are found to be correct, and that's about all I got.
Second one, Mr. Kastelias. All in favor?
Aye.
Can you oppose? Thank you. Arms, Mr. Blackwell?
Yes. Just pull it up here. Give me one second. Arms responded for the month of November to 236 responses and collected $54,891 and three cents. It's about what I have for you this month. Cut it kind of short, right?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Blackwell? Thank you. Jared, do I see any comments?
All set, thank you.
WBCA Charlie, any report?
We have one issue with, but it's a communication, so I take care of both at the same time.
Thank you. Mr. Schewert, Josh, five questions, please.
Yeah, for the month of November, Department responded to, I'll just highlight some of the big ones. MVA assist eight, smoke and or odor investigations four, grass brush two, structure fires three, and system fault six, for a total of 38 calls for the month of November.
Anyone want to come on, comment on the Organists Committee? Mr. Carroll's not here anymore with us. I told you to pass it on. Anyone care to comment regarding the housing authority? And the other committees? Superintendent Malone, should care to comment tonight on the Board of Education?
Oh, sure. First, I'd like to congratulate everyone who made it in, though, for the election decisions. Happy to work with everybody's. Congratulations to our boys, like the mayor said, although I listened down the radio and we would have been freezing. But we were proud of our board of executives.
Yes, yes.
Lisa has been working with the auditor, maybe she got, and Rishi, and we're working on our budget, like a lot just at the schools. There's a lot of events going on. You've got Winter Wonderland at E with over 300 parents, which came out, which was really happy that that's starting to happen. And, yeah, Cringle, yes, and then breakfast with Santa Claus on Tuesday, and that was about Saturday, Saturday before. Thursday evening, we're getting music for like the high school. There's a lot of things going on. Next week, the high school is honoring those who achieved very high on their PSATs and SATs. So, yes, there's a lot to develop this month, and it's been a very short month. Oh, and tomorrow evening, we're getting training for our Board of Ed members from Connecticut Association of Police of Ed on their roles and their responsibilities. So John was instrumental, came to a workshop with me, and that's been so over here. And also, hopefully everything will be on target through January for the volunteers, so that we can bring back some of those students, get them to the U.S. system, and work for that. Even now, have a wonderful holiday.
Thank you. Thank you. City Treasurer, Judy McFlary, I'm sorry, John, you have questions?
Since, since you were, we got you to speak, Mr. Yaman and I are both looking very forward to having a meet.
Services, I know Charlie is setting it up.
Good.
And we have information to.
I know, we've been working.
And John, contact the person who was very instrumental in providing the presentation. And what did he say?
We brought New London area, we have a facilitator who will be, we hope to retain to facilitate, this is a neutral guy, that is separate from, there's no skin in the game on the city side or the Board of Ed side. And the superintendent that we spoke with in Grapton indicated that they've had some good success with shared services, primarily because they had an independent outside facilitator to come in to manage the process and keep the, you know, the politics out, if you will. And so we're going to be meeting with that individual, we have a proposal from him, hope to commence with some discussions with everyone in short. So that's the good news, sir.
So things are going out, then, even though I didn't.
That's, that's, squeaky wheel gets the grease, the projec, the, what's your, what's your projection?
I'm driving the grease.
Where, what would your projection be when you think we would be able to meet?
Well, I would book the person here right away.
So after, after the first.
Contact, I felt too, to see whether the ability is, before I extend the invitation to everybody.
Okay, so if you haven't extended an invitation, your meeting, it'll be in January, I will ask again.
Do you have one before you ask?
Great, thank you. Chris Gud, Mr. Yaman? Thank you. Thank you, Carol.
Thank you, sir. Dr. Malone, has the furniture for the portables arrived yet?
I don't know. Idea has been syndicated, but hoping to it middle of January, I believe, but hoping to it.
Whomever, has it been funded? Okay, thank you. Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, Michael. Chief McFlary, could I comment? Actually, Treasury.
I don't have a report every time.
Okay. Municipal reports, poll renovations, and I'd like to make a motion, accept those recommendations.
Anything we need to know, Chief?
I'm sorry, say again?
Raise your phone, please.
Second, Chief, say, say what I said. Call in favor?
Aye.
Discussion number five, yes.
What are we looking for now? The line items, both legal and claims, were cut drastically in the budgetary process from last year to this year. We've already had several claims that were the insurance companies, which our portion, our maximum portion is $25,000 each, we've already had a couple of those and another, another one on the table. We just weren't going to make it, we had $60,000 for the year. And the legal side of it, we've got union negotiations going on, ongoing, and some other legal issues that needed to be dealt with. So we just weren't going to make it. There wasn't enough money in the boat contingency, so boat decided to take some money out of the contingency for this one line, out of the reserve for this one grouping, and leave approximately $150,000 in the boat contingency, knowing that, as Chief and Mike Tellezio, I'm sure with winter coming, we'll be looking for some overtime money and some other things. So instead of depleting the entire contingency down to zero, they opted at this point to move some out of the reserve and into boat contingency to cover some of this.
Okay. Any other discussion? Motion on the floor, seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Can you oppose? Motion carried, thank you. Land use report?
Land use department would be $1,474, send another. Motion to report.
Motion number two, second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Can you oppose? Yes, Kastelias.
Motion to accept the tax collector's report request for refunds out of $1,000, $5,000 to the seventy percent.
Correct. Similar answer, seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Can you oppose? Motion carried, thank you. Kastelias, yes.
Motion for Austin, same time as Corporation Council, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Can you oppose? Thank you. Communications, communication number one. Mr. John Markowitz, regarding previous claim, number six dash seven two dash eight nine thirty.
This is a, they're claiming, we discussed during public session, but also, you brought to our attention in the past. I know there's some discussion in council, so I'm going to ask you to put it back to Corporation Council to put, to, I guess, maybe we'll put that on.
Any discussion? Mr. Stoll.
Do we need to do this? I mean, this is right adjacent to a state, a state easement, shouldn't the state have to deal with this?
Well, I can say that we have reached out to the state, and we want to make sure that we're, the city's doing everything to help facilitate correction of this issue, which we do believe is a state issue. We've had similar problems like this. And we've had, sometimes we have success getting the DOT to come down and pick up their responsibility, other times it's more challenging. Alderman Kastelias and I have talked on it, and I've even reached out on their behalf to the insurance company to prod them along. to the insurance company to prod them along. I think recently, however, we had the state trying to point the finger back, is that correct? Alderman Castellantis. So, I can definitely, I would say definitely, I would agree with that, refer it to me, I can talk to the homeowner, and maybe the city could help push things along here. We definitely would like to see this issue rectified, and we do believe it's the state's responsibility here.
Will we need to refer it to the city engineer or the director of public works?
If you refer it to my office, I can work with the city engineer and public works.
So, is somehow, could this motion be changed a little bit to clearly state that the state seems to have some responsibility, and there needs to be more investigation?
I don't think that's necessary. If the motion was to defer, then, would you mind?
Well, in the minutes, I'll reflect that I believe...
That's fine, I just want to make sure...
That certainly says position at this point that it's the state's responsibility, but the city would like to help facilitate the correction of this problem, and certainly be more than happy to meet with both the homeowner and to see what we can do to further things along.
Yeah, thank you, sir. Just a very quick question for Corporation Council, or anybody in their chamber. I did hear State Senator George Logan's name mentioned. Have we reached out to Linda Gentile and Senator Logan to get their assistance with this, or?
That would be my next step, if it looks like the state's going to deny responsibility. If they're pointing the finger back at us, I would get Linda Gentile and George Logan involved. Linda has been very helpful, Representative Gentile, in the past, in correcting some of these issues, including one on Pulaski Highway, that was a problem about four years ago. So, hopefully, George and Linda can be helpful here.
Thank you, sir. Okay, we have a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Are you opposed? Same thing, discuss by some things, motion carried. Communication number two, we had a letter from the citizen, Mr. Paul Mudd, regarding WPCA, Michelle.
This is, I'd like to make a motion that this gets sent back to the WPCA. We've already discussed it at the WPCA last meeting. We have been working with the regional water company to find out where there's meters that are broken and other, so this, this is just an oversight error, but it's not like we haven't been working on it. I mean, to, since the mayor, in his first term, since he put his commissioners on that, on that board, if anyone could have saw the negligence of collecting money and where we are today, I mean, it's just astr, it would be considered astronomical, because it's been hundreds of thousands of dollars, not tens, hundreds. So, I mean, we're going to take care of this.
I'll second that. Motion on the floor, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Are you opposed? Motion carried, yes, thank you. Communication number three, bid opening results regarding the pet school.
I'd like to make a motion to accept a little bit, kind of standard, I wish it was a little better, from this one.
Motion number two, Mr. Cassilas, any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Are you opposed? Thank you, motion carried. Communication number four, regarding bid opening results, the way we have. Mr. Yaman?
I'd like to make a motion to accept a little bit, from J. Pucci Incorporated, I hope, I hope.
I hope.
I hope.
I'll second.
Very much, please, Mr. Cassilas.
Yes, sir. Four billion, four hundred sixteen thousand five hundred ten dollars.
Thank you. Motion seconded, Mr. Cassilas, all in favor?
Aye.
Are you opposed? Motion carried, thank you. Resignation, we have three letters of resignation. Mr. Sett, make a motion to accept, and send a letter of advance to each one. We have, Mr. Hanks, please.
Alright, that would be Mr. Randolph Carroll, Board of Aldermen, Mr. Crystal Gant Powers, Corporate Commission, and Mr. Keith Murray, Squire, Economic Development Commission.
Second. Second. Mr. Rivers. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Are you opposed? Thank you, motion carried. Next, I'm on the agenda, our appointments, we're going to sue the rescue of medical services. Mr. Cassilas, please, make a motion for appointment, Ryan, on seven cable drive. Second, by Mr. Kennedy, all in favor?
Aye.
Are you opposed? Thank you, motion carried. Board of Portion and Taxation, Mr. Paul Mudd.
Danny Teague, for three years, one day with half a period term, Michael Merzak, three years' term, Doug Setti, and Peter Genio.
Chuck.
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 There are second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Are you opposed? Thank you, motion carried, yes. Board of Building Appeals, Mr. Shure.
I'd like to oppose Donald Amen of Ford, Jason Wright Drive, and Christopher Sanso, twenty-seven High Acres Road.
There are second, Mr. Cassilas, all in favor?
Aye.
Any votes? Motion carried, thank you. Board of Police Commissioners, Mr. Cassilas.
Bruce Hart, Golden City Senior, twenty-nine one drive, over the mountain, one time drive.
There are second, thank you, all in favor?
Aye.
Any votes? Thank you, motion carried. Board of Public Works, Mr. Spoh.
Point Kenneth Plavnicki, fifteen Mountain View Road, and Andrew Garunthrow, thirty-six Granite Terrace.
There are second. Mr. Brown, all, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, motion carried. Commission for Elderly Services, Mr. Dempsey.
I have a motion to accept, and we prefer shared vote, and Susan E. Eno, and the pre-bond service.
There are second. There are second.
Aye.
Are you opposed? Thank you, motion carried. Corporation Council.
Mr. John P. Marini, Levin Holly Drive, for another, is it two years?
Sixty.
Mr. Dempsey. All in favor?
Aye.
Are you opposed? Thank you, motion carried. Cultural Commission, Mr. Shure.
We're going to nominate George Putamat of Thirteen Joyce Ave for reappointment.
He's our second. Yaman, second, thank you. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Are you opposed? Motion carried, thank you. The volume board, Yaman.
I'd make a motion to appoint Alvarado, fifty-three Elm Street, under Rio, six hundred twenty-one, under the road, Tim Holmer, forty-eight Elm Street, Lord DeCaro, five fifteen Beaver Street, Mr. Castellantis, twenty-five Cedar Street, and Danes, four hundred sixty-six High Street.
Second, Mr. Michael Rivers, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? I abstain, Mr. Cassilas abstains, thank you. Fire Commissioner, Mr. Spoh.
Joseph Cassetti, seventy-two Root Avenue, and Joseph Yaman, one eighty-three Wakely Avenue, Joshua Shure, one nineteen Pringle Avenue, appoint to an additional two years.
There are seconds.
Second.
All in favor, say aye. Any opposed?
Abstain.
Abstain?
Abstain.
Rivers, thank you, now let's stand, Mr. Kennedy, thank you, John.
President Carr? I have a question on the last one, the Equality Board, it doesn't list the term, is it a one-year term or a two-year term? Just for the record.
Well, it's two years.
Nineteen, five, twenty nineteen.
Oh, I just didn't, I just didn't say it on the tab, okay. Sorry about that, thank you.
Historical Commission, Yaman, make a motion to appoint Clark Flaherty, twenty-nine percent. There are second, Mr. Cassilas, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, motion carried. Inland Wetlands Commission, Mr. Martin Dempsey.
Make a motion to accept, approve Michael Teague and Charles, success period circle, and Charles Decker, the end street.
There are second. Mr. Shure, second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, motion carried.
Abstain.
Extensions, Rivers. Recreation Commission, Mr. Cassilas.
Make a motion to appoint Lary of Sixteen Hoxsey Way, Timothy O'Reilly, appoint Richard Street, Charlie appeared, the third of Five Barf Almey Lab, and Alfonso, the, 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 appeared, too.
Senator Yaman, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. The higher board, Yaman, make a motion to appoint five members, Barry Cassetti of one oh two Root Avenue, Dan King of sixty-four Woodlong, fifty-sixteen, Jonathan Terresois, a leading prospect, David Niglari, one sixty-seven Pulaski, Martin Dempsey of ten Roblin, and John Snidman, twenty-two Russell Street. State District, Mr. Castellantis, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, motion carried. Thank you, registered, Martin Dempsey. And, and Mr. Second. School Building Commission, Captain, all right.
Make a motion to appoint the following three individuals to School Building Commission for a two-year term, Leonard Duffus of Ten Hickory Lane, Gary Cassetti of one oh two Root Avenue, and Joseph Giannetti of Two Gracie Lane.
There are second. Yaman, seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, motion carried. There are your two. Board of Appeals, Mr. Yaman.
Make a motion to appoint two individuals to apply their terms, body of dignity, thirteen hundred drive, and Albert Brown, and the, the, the.
There are second. Rivers. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Motion carried, thank you. Resolution, two resolutions. I will leave that. Resolution number one, where asked pursuant to Connecticut General Statute, section thirty-two dash seven sixty-three, the Connecticut Department of Economic and Community Development is authorized to extend financial assistance for economic development projects, and where asked is desirable, and the public interest of the City of Ansonia make an application for the state bank, for two hundred thousand dollars in order to undertake the six hundred sixty-five million street assessment, and to execute an assistance agreement, now therefore be resolved by the City Board of Aldermen, that is, according to other conditions and prerequisites, for the state financial assistance imposed by Connecticut General Statute, section thirty-two dash seven sixty-three. At the filing of an application for state financial assistance by the City of Ansonia, in the amount not received, two hundred thousand dollars is hereby approved, and that David Espositi, Mayor of the City of Ansonia is directed to execute and file such application with the Connecticut Department of Economic and Community Development, and provide such additional information, to execute such other documents as may be required, and to execute an assistance agreement with the State of Connecticut for state financial assistance if such an agreement is offered, to execute any amendments, decisions, or restrictions thereto, and to act as the authorized representative of the City of Ansonia. Motion, Mr. Spoh. Second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, Mr. Spoh.
Yes, we, we were, there's a couple of us that were asking on sixty-five exactly what you anticipate needing to be tested, Sheila. What area, is it inside the building, is it in the parking lot, where is?
Yep, I think we're going to do some additional testing in the, in the garage.
Okay.
First floor, that grounds level, and we're also going to do some testing on the parking lot, if need be, and the building that, that is adjacent to the parking lot.
Thanks, Sheila. Thank you. Any further discussion? Motion on the floor, seconded, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried, yes. Resolution number two, where asked pursuant to Connecticut General Statute, section thirty-two dash seven sixty-three, the Connecticut Department of Economic and Community Development is authorized to extend financial assistance for economic development projects, and where asked is desirable, and in public interest of the City of Ansonia make an application to state for two hundred thousand dollars in order to undertake the assessment, and Ansonia cotton brass, and to execute an assistance agreement, now therefore be resolved by the Ansonia Board of Aldermen, and is, according to other conditions and prerequisites, on the state financial assistance imposed by Connecticut General Statute, thirty-two dash seven sixty-three, at the filing of an application for state financial assistance by the City of Ansonia, in the amount of, in the amount not received, two hundred thousand dollars, is hereby approved, and that David Espositi, Mayor of the City of Ansonia, is directed to execute and file such application with the Connecticut Department of Economic and Community Development, to provide such additional information, to execute such other documents as may be required, to execute an assistance agreement with the State of Connecticut for state financial assistance, if such agreement is offered, and to execute any amendments, decisions, or restrictions thereto, and to act as the authorized representative of the City of Ansonia. Your motion, Mr. Dempsey, second, Mr. Cassilas, discuss. No discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Ordinance, is it? Ordinance is aye, and we just talked about this, new business, and very new business. Yaman, Mr. President, I did want to break something up, which was a little bit, after discussion, after discussion, issuing every order, and the city can help. I'd like to, at this point, open that up, and make that motion. Discussion. I just say, I don't know if we can handle this, all of us have got email addresses, so we can have our city business, something, our government, our private address, and all, email address? I'm asking, uh...
It's eligible, I mean, we're paying about eighty dollars a month, I just need to inform, make sure everybody's aware that we do archive all the email through the city, so anything that does come through is archived. It also is housed through Google. If, I mean, you guys are charging the money, so if I need money, that's fine, it's only probably, what, we talked to fifteen hundred dollars more a year, so I'm sure we can handle that, if that's what you so desire. We'll need to have correct spellings, what we do is first initial, last name, at ansoniact.org, and it's basically as safe as Gmail. We host it through Gmail.
Any other discussion? Spoh.
Yes, we, we were talking about this many times over the past, and it was, and we said, unless we could get a grant to do this, to tablets?
No, we're talking about...
Dresses, and one thing leads to another.
Segway. Segway.
We were going to get a grant, and now I'm hearing fifteen hundred dollars, and maybe that needs to be part of the grant. That's my opening statement on that matter.
Any further discussion? Mr. Rip.
I would only want to share with the full Board of Aldmen that during the budget process earlier this year, we were fighting over hundreds of dollars, not just thousands of dollars, so when I hear fifteen hundred dollars, I have a concern about that. I don't say anything in an email that I wouldn't mind having put out a billboard, so that's just the way I am. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Motion on the floor, Mr. Second. Okay, and all, Mr. Shure.
So, are we going to pursue grants for that, or not? Packaging it in with, with the other thing, or?
I don't know if a motion...
You have to change the motion. Mr. Blackwell, are you willing to adapt your, was it you? Sorry, I wasn't, you want to adapt it?
I don't even know if it's going to. I guess, that's a storage question.
Tablets?
No.
No.
Emails, I pay eighty-five dollars per email, per year. Eighty-five dollars per email, for you? Per year, that's for the hosting service and the archiving service, and all the pieces that I need to do for city protections.
So, if someone wants to opt out, with a grant out, is that correct?
Yeah, I pay as I add, so whichever ones I add, will, I'll just be billed for it.
Any further discussion?
Yeah. Sheila, zip, pod... Sheila, is it possible to incorporate that into the grant?
Yeah, actually, Alderman Stone, I think that's a good suggestion. The total cost of what it would be for your emails and for your pads, and going forward hosting each, or whatever you have to do every year. So, I, I think I have a pretty good idea of what that's gonna cost us. There are some places that I can look for that grant funding, and, um, if this board wants to move forward, we'll do that.
I believe the Board of Ed is using Chromebooks.
And, yeah, there might be some crossover.
Probably are $200 a pop or so for, for a Chromebook. Utilizing Wi-Fi in the building.
Yeah, I was gonna say, we can partner with, uh, even, we have to go outside of the city, to, uh, park everybody, like, uh, including, uh, or, well, that we should do. Include it in the, uh, in the grant.
I'd, I'd, I'd move to modify the motion, uh, to, uh, contingent, uh, upon the grant. Not only the issuance of the mail, but also, uh, you know, export tablets.
There are second. Yep. You just got a second here. Any discussion?
Sorry, guys, one more quick thing.
Yeah.
So, this would, the tablets would supplement the, um, paper?
That would be the hope.
Because we were discussing that. About eighteen boxes of paper get used annually, plus ink, which is probably over $1,000, um, which the city wouldn't have to spend.
Good point.
It's not part of the, the, uh, motion, is it?
It is not, but.
If you make it part of the motion, we're gonna have, be here for a while.
Yeah, no.
'Cause I, if I, if I have to go at my house, at my expense, with a copier and copy all that stuff, that ain't right. I'm volunteer here, 'cause I, I, I like paper. I mean, I can, I can deal with the tablet, I can answer, read it, do whatever, but when it comes to the end, I'm gonna wanna have paper.
Mr. President, if some Alderman, uh, for example, attorneys, say Joe Yaman and myself, with court, there's an option where we can select electronic filings only. It's optional. So, if we know that our pleadings, we'd like them sent just by email, we can go that direction, but other attorneys could choose to get hard copies. This board could do the same, if there's anyone that would like to simply opt to do email only, we could, we, we certainly email every single piece of paper out already. We could simply choose not to put hard copies in the boxes to save on the expense, but then other individuals that prefer the hard copy, they could certainly, they could still get their hard copy and email.
Well, there is, there is pay, I mean, I'm getting ready to go on my eight years here, if I don't die in the next two years, a- and, uh, there's paperwork that I save, you know, I file, and, and I just keep it in, and it's important, and every once in a while, I have to dig it up, if it's a Board of Ed, or something, the Charter, or whatever it is, I, I dig it up, and I can't, I'm not, the tablet will be gone, you know?
Yeah, some people are more comfortable with physical copies, but some people are very comfortable archiving electronic copies. It could be up to the preference of the Alderman, and you'd still get a good savings, 'cause one Alderman box alone, think about all those copies.
Thank you.
I don't think anyone's gonna force us to.
Thanks.
She's paid for all of the tablets, or vice versa.
Thanks, Lord. I don't think so either, and I think.
Any other discussion? Motion on the floor, second.